Oh, yeah, no, that's not me. It's my son. And I really stuck on the chair and I didn't have a knife in time.
Oh, your fox pictures today there, Mark? That's pretty cool.
Isn't that awesome?
Yeah, was that, was that a groundhog on there too?
The groundhog is taking over the fox's den now.
Oh, really?
Foxes have moved on.
The Lion King, you know, where the, the, the head of the neighborhood is on top of the hill overseeing everything. Yeah.
Hi, John, we are.
Go ahead.
We are live on YouTube.
Brian. Brian? Go ahead. Mitch. Is Mitch talking?
Now, John, that's me, Mike. I was just saying, we're, we're live on YouTube and, uh, ready to go.
Brian, would you mind being the public reciter of, of the pledge of allegiance for us tonight?
There we go.
Brian Wallace?
Yes.
Mind being the public reciter of the pledge of allegiance? We've kind of made a command decision that the, pledge did not really seem to do honor to the flag or anything else.
Yes, I have a flag right here behind me too, all set up for that.
I remembered that. There would be good. And I believe we are at 7:01 actually, so I will call this meeting to a quarter. And aside change from our minority on YouTube, we are going to have a single reciter of the pledge of allegiance frankly out of respect to the flag. So please join Mayor Wallace in pledge of allegiance to the flag. Are you there, Brian?
Yeah, some here, yeah.
Okay, good. You want voice for him?
I know, I'm in and out a little bit over here. A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Amy, would you please?
Mayor Wallace?
Here.
Tracy Bowen?
Here.
Jeff Cottington?
Present.
John Engel?
Here.
Mark Glenn?
Present.
Marilyn Jacobson? Mike Kelly?
Here.
Yeah, Mike?
I am here.
Mitch Myerson?
Here.
Hank Couch? Sean Curran?
Here.
Mike McGinnis?
Here.
Pat DeGandey? Rich O'Brien?
Thank you. And now, uh, thank you. This meeting is being recorded and also broadcast live on YouTube. Uh, concessions to the agenda. I am aware of one change adding action item number one, the asbestos, for asbestos mitigation for the Pendo building in Groves Town. We'll get to that when we get to the, uh, action items. Does anybody else have any concessions? I see none. Sean and Amy, do we have any public comment?
No.
We have no public comment. We'll move to the consent agenda. Would anybody care to make a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the May 12th, 2020 council meeting with dispersance from the general 154,372 dollars and 21 cents for the month to report to be filed for audit?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Marilyn.
Okay. Any? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those dissenting say nay? The ayes have it. I'm not aware of any special items. Does that correct? Nothing? So we will immediately move to council committee reports, starting with the mayor's report, Mayor Wallace.
I have nothing to report today.
What about for the Central Bucks Regional Police Commission?
Um, we are in the midst of, uh, negotiations with the union. Uh, we have, we've gone through one round. We're starting our second round, uh, tomorrow. We're at person in Duell Borough. Um, we're dealing with, uh, issues, uh, the regular issues, wages, et cetera, and, um, health insurance and stuff like that. Uh, I think those details will have to wait for a second session, but, uh, we are moving ahead. Comment on the, uh, building?
Pardon me?
Marilyn might want to comment on the, uh, police building, the program.
The, uh, bids have been advertised. I think they're a bidding, uh, we opened, uh, she able to all that at our July meeting. So it's out to bid.
Thank you, Marilyn. Captain Milligan, do you have?
No, I do not at this point. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have for today. Thank you, sir. Yes.
Pension funding?
Yes.
Where, where do we stand on that?
I would call that a back burner issue right now, to be honest with you. Uh, with the, uh, cost of the lease of building, it says an extra $4,000 above, uh, what we added, and now it's kind of well, kind of burned great. Especially with, uh, uh, the uncertainty of revenues for the boroughs. Um, it's not what I necessarily wanted to hear, but, um, we, we do need to get through these two issues to, uh, uh, to get that back on the agenda. Now, of course, the police building, they'll be, uh, hopefully they'll be, uh, putting a shovel in the ground in the early fall. Uh, maybe late fall. I, I, I hope it will begin this year. I think that's the, uh, feeling. Um, and, uh, the same thing with the police contract. Um, the arbitration, if, if we can't come to an agreement, we're September. So if we don't have anything settled by then, we go to arbitration, but we will have something settled by arbitration before the end of the year once again. So that's, that's the status of that. I've been able to get these other, other issues flowing, but any of those as far as addressing it directly. Uh, we could have a meeting, uh, last finance committee meeting, uh, outlining what's going on with the pension fund and, and, uh, one of the things that, um, they're going to recommend is that we, um, um, and, and I would like some input on this is that they want to reduce the amount of real estate investment in the pension fund. Right now, it's a real small amount. It's 2%. It's part of their plan. Already that has been approved by everybody, so they're going to need, uh, uh, the police commission to approve reducing that down to 1%. Um, evidently, well, the reality is, is that there's really no, there's no way to invest in residential real estate as far as a, um, a REIT or some other type of, of vehicle. Uh, those are all, those are all in commercial investments. So when you invest in a REIT, a REIT is basically a fund uh, that's full of, uh, uh, real estate investments, but they're all commercial investments. And they're not doing well and the, the, uh, pension managers seem to think that that's just dragging the fund down. So that's think that that's just dragging the fund down. It's a move that they're making right now. Um, other than that, they're in a, in a wait and hold pattern. And I think everybody is, they really wouldn't commit to anything because it's one of the questions I asked to them was, um, are all these forecasts and decisions that you're making, are they based on really short-term, uh, outcomes? Because we really don't know what we're doing. They said absolutely. He said, we're not making any long-term guesses at this point. Um, we're, we're running under the assumption that as this gets better, so will the economy, um, but we're not hedging, we are hedging against that as well. So they're, they're playing it very close to the best and very cool as far as the market goes. Um, I don't think we've lost, as I remember, we haven't lost a lot of ground in the pension fund per se, uh, but they're concerned about the future.
What, what's the rate of return that they're using today?
7.25.
Unbelievable.
It is, it is unbelievable. Yes, it is.
That's ridiculous. That's absurd, actually. Um, I'd just like to be on record publicly as, to register how disappointed I am in terms of where we are and what activities going on to fix it. So.
Appreciate that. Will be noted.
There is, um, on the finance committee, a commitment, perhaps warm, but not hot, to revisit this at our next meeting. Um, and try to, I will try to push the, push the assumptions. We just got our state audit report on our pensions. And, uh, I will be sharing what, what our assumptions were with the finance committee and hopes it may bring them to a better number. And if I may, uh, everybody, everyone in the room, I believe, said that they would not try to make a prediction on what will happen uh, by the end of this year, but the end of this year is another valuation point for the MMOs. And some of this could be somewhat self-correcting, Jeff, in particular. If, if there's poor performance, the MMOs will go up, which will help get people more online with putting more into the pension funding, which in reality is the only way. Uh, I mean, the thing is that
I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Um, and I will be sharing where Shell Point was when we merged with our assumptions on return on investment and so on and so forth. And, and hope will be more conservative in those. The ultimate thing will be to drive up the MMOs because the only way this pension is ever going to get fully funded is to give, put more money into it. Uh, the way the assumptions come into this is that the assumptions are used on a 15-year window to go to be fully funded in, at 100% in 15 years. And that's right, a high rate of return drives down the MMO, which is appealing to our partners at this point.
So what I wanted to add about that is the, the assumption rate is all a function of the MMOs because, for instance, we're, we're estimating seven and a quarter percent return right now. And of, of course, we're not going to get that. So what that means is that if you don't make that by the end of the year, you don't get a 7.25%. You're just paying more each, each month. The MMO gets readjusted to make up for the difference. So, um, that, that assumption is really just a made up number. You know, if we made it 4% or something like that, which was much more realistic, we would just see less fluctuations in the MMO, which would make it more realistic on a 15-year amortization, you know, to make that fully funded. And it really comes down to just what John said, is all the parties making a commitment to fund that. If you, if you were just counting on your rate of return, you're just spinning the wheel. Um, uh, because each year it might be different, like this year was a big shock, although, uh, some investments are holding their ground. But the reality is, is that the only way to fund it is to fund it with cash. Uh, because you can't count on what those things are going to match, are going to come out of. And then in Brenton Township, I was told that they, they were funded probably before this happened, 104%. So I, I, I asked Eileen Bradley how they did that, and she said, we made a commitment to fund it. You know, when we had a little bit of money left over from here, we throw into police pension. When we got a grant, didn't use all the money, we throw it at the police pension. So that's what it takes. It takes a commitment to throw the money at it directly and, and, and everything else that, um, that comes as far as investment wise, just shortens the, the time it takes to get there. That's, that's the explanation of it anyway.
Yeah, it's not my concern, the assumed rate. It's just ironic what they use. It's the funding levels, obviously. So that's what we have to address.
And I think the state came out and said that, that they would prefer us to be at 6%, that that was the recommended, um, major return to use. Um, so I guess that's all I have for the police commission unless anybody has any other question.
Hey, Brian, it's Tracy. I have just a quick question. I know, um, you, you said it's out to bid for the building. Are we reasonably confident that the new figure for our cost estimate is more realistic and that we'll get bids that are, that are in that ballpark, or we're just guessing at this point, like?
Um, I mean, that's a good question because, uh, after the last round, my confidence was somewhat shaken in those, in those bids. Um, but now we're at what they call the 90% uh, mark where they believe that they have the numbers down to within 90% of accuracy. Um, so the contingency rate is 10%, you know, for the things that are going to happen along the way. Uh, things that cost more money, uh, things that were under budgeted, you know, things like that. So I think there's a certain confidence right now at this rate, at this point, that they're pretty much on the mark. And we'll find out, you know, we'll find out in a month, basically. Uh, how? Um, I don't know if any of you saw the, uh, uh, the thing about the, uh, remediation for asbestos. You know, that came in $65,000 under budget. Uh, so, you know, that's, that's a good sign. Um, uh, you know, one of the things that shook my confidence a little bit was they counted on the roof being, being okay. Well, didn't somebody get up on the roof? You know, that's what they do to a roof is you got to get on it before you decide whether you're going to use it or not. Um, so I was a little, you know, put off by that and, uh, um, and that was one of the reasons that the cost got up so high. Uh, they just looked at it and said, oh, we can use that. So I was a little, uh, put off by that myself. But I think that, in short, I think right now we're at the 90% point and that's supposed to, uh, be pretty accurate.
And, and then Brian or Marilyn, I don't know if either of you know, is there any room to, um, I don't know if the word is reverse engineer the flag, but like, can we whittle it down more to get closer to our number if not where we want it to be? Or do we?
Well, there have been some things, once we got into the building and, and Pendot was out of the building. Um, there was talk of whether we really needed to take out the stairway uh, when we might be able to use it. I, Sean, do you know how they, if they determined that they can use?
They are reusing the staircase. Um, there have been significant cuts since the initial plan was made up. So to answer your question, a lot of things that could be removed have already been removed.
Okay.
And Billstown Borough, their, their, you know, grounds crew, they went to kind of town in place, um, and, and as a result of the fact that it's going to be their building as well, some of our work got picked up, uh, somewhere I heard a number of around $300,000, just, you know, just having them do it, uh, uh, their salaried staff and somebody else to do some of the demolition.
Yes, they did a lot of the demolition themselves.
Yeah.
And all we paid for was, uh, disposal. Our portion, the police billing portion of the whole project is 43% of the project, and we pay a third of that. So that puts us at, let's just call it 14% of the cost of the project. But so that's where we are.
Which is that about 1.4 million and some change? I forget exactly.
Well, we're not saying numbers right now. It's out to bid.
You're right, I don't want to say that.
You didn't say that, Sean, or not Sean. You didn't say that, Sean, did you? We're seeing what happens. There's, uh, there's new protocol with, with the pandemic that they have to use with construction. There's a question of, of what companies are still in business, who's bidding on projects, what the competition is like. There's a lot of unknowns. But we are going to find out in about three weeks. So you'll just have to wait.
Yeah, and I know in my business that I, I, I can't get a contract to return a fund. I'm just so swamped right now. Project is calling me for getting to help them. And it's just totally backed up.
But, uh, at this point, the bids are out there.
We, we have a healthy stream of a lot of people bidding, so it's, it's still a very competitive, a very good market to be bidding projects in.
Do we know if any of that RACP, unused RACP money can be from ours, can be used, um, on this project?
Uh, we don't know.
We're currently waiting to hear back on what we, you know, last month we gave, uh, we, was Kent Baird with Gilmore. We, uh, signed a contract with him and he's reviewing what he thinks we can actually apply for. He's being creative, um, because RACP doesn't necessarily want to, you know, fund the same project from two different, um, municipalities, but he thinks he can put together a strong application for us and, you know, see, we'll see what happens. So we're, we're, I don't know what the number is going to be yet, but we, he's working on it for us. I just talked to him this morning.
Thank you.
That's all I have, John.
Okay, um, with that, let's move to the project works, Marilyn.
Okay, so the report is in the packet and also we have our new parks map. Uh, it replaces the 2008 parks and trails map. Um, I'm hoping we can, Sean, I think we're putting this out into the display cases on the trails. Uh, Pat, I think dropped off larger copies today. Uh, and we're, we're going to notify the public and I know they've been out there discovering the trails and this gives the map um, for all of Shell Point. And it's, it's, uh, quite a difference from the 2008, um, trails map. So it shows what all we've accomplished in, in 12 years. Um, and it just happens that we're very close to the 10th anniversary of the Lympson Field Bridge. So that's how long that bridge has been connecting with, uh, North Branch Park. So, um, also Chestnut Street Park is close to completion. And, uh, the Bristol Road Extension, I think everyone on council uh, received the information. It's on the draft of the, the TIP project, uh, which is the transportation improvement projects for, uh, Delaware Valley, which is, uh, I believe six counties. Um, and they're proposing to fund the Bristol Road Extension uh, in 2021 with project completion in January of 2025. So, uh, it's, that's been a long time in the, they've had a lot of good news in the, uh, parks and, and street projects. And that's all I have for that.
What about 5K?
Okay, well, after, uh, tonight, we can take the 5K off the agenda until at least October. Um, we actually made $8,200 on this year's 5K, which amazing, it wouldn't have been Saturday. Um, we, from runners who had, that we had 200 runners that had signed up for the whole and they don't, some of them chose to donate, others chose to give orders to delay till 2021. Plus the sponsors that we had, most of them chose to donate the fund. So we have a profit this year of maybe $200. So today I looked up, I have data from 2006 to today. So that's 15 5Ks, and we have made on those 15 5Ks It's all gone into our Parks and Trail project. So the Shell Point Challenge, even though this year was, uh, small, has made a major impact on Shell Point's, uh, everyday life. I'm proud of what we've accomplished.
Marilyn, congratulations to you for stewarding that for all these years. Job well done.
Yes, well, if anyone would like, uh, to learn how to do this, very willing to share.
How to do that. Assignments.
Well, we still have fun, like scheduled without, without the bounce houses.
I think I saw Captain Milligan's hand go up.
Yes, Mitch?
I have a question, uh, recreational, uh, issue. I know Sean was mentioning, uh, about doing some sort of local parade on July 4th. Was there any traction on, on that?
I have talked to the emergency, you know, the, the fire and EMS and the and, uh, there is support there for that. Um, I've also been contacted by, uh, township with some questions about it. So I just look for some kind of a unofficial, uh, we think they get to come, other community.
To it, uh, we, uh, we in the business community want to know if that's something we can tag along on to, on a moving train, like you said.
We can definitely talk about it. I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting here tomorrow about it.
Okay.
Anybody else? I see no one. Um, Mr. Cotting?
Uh, nothing to report for the month of August. Uh, look for some additional activity beginning in June timeframes as we come out of the um, station opening up.
Uh, is O.L. today? They have.
The old, the, uh, train station, we, we have, uh, we allowed that rent to, uh, off for a few months, but we are in negotiations with him, what his payment plan is going to look like. He's starting to pay again this month.
O.L. cows paying and they never stop.
Correct.
Anything else? Utilities, Mr. Myerson?
Uh, due to our, I see this one. Okay, the, it's the, the only thing is I also said with the, uh, park collector processes are putting up, but you are blowing up much, artists of the, that is, uh, on with the county state one. So there will be little impact on property tax due to the code 19 uh, event, whatever we want to call that.
And our junior borough councillor? He is not present. Uh, we do have an item of discussion at the end of the staff report. Uh, John?
Yes.
Go back to us. A question on the finance. Uh, on practice, getting on the Bristol Road development? Any word?
Yeah. Uh, the ball is in the game, of course, they, they have approval and it's, uh, the next steps are theirs.
Did you hear anything about starting or anything like that?
I am not aware. Okay, have you heard anything, Sean?
They are working on it. They break ground yesterday, but, uh, they're still working on it. They still have a lot of things to, uh, clean up and, um, approvals to get these, but, uh, moving along. What I anticipate starting this year.
Do you have any idea or is anybody given an idea of earnings coming through down here? That's, that's my first question. My second question is, uh, are unemployment, um, payments taxed as earned income?
On your first question, the answer is I am not aware of anywhere, anybody making, uh, a prediction on that. The only thing I have heard is we're going to have to wait and see. a prediction on that. The only thing I have heard is we're gonna have to wait and see. See what people report and that's coming from uh two different tax agencies. But uh they, they don't and I do not have any idea if unemployment is taxable.
We should have a lot more information on the taxes next month.
I believe, I believe the number is in fact taxable.
Is it? Okay.
I believe so, yes. The other area, if I read Daryl's report right, the uh real estate transfer tax is going to miss forecast by a significant amount of money this year unless something changes rapidly. I think so far we've collected $30,000 to $40,000 against $150,000 budget. Um, so we're not even a third of the way to that budget. So there's a lot of money uh tack, taxation issues floating around out there that is going to be um, that may need to be addressed over the next four months or so. Um, some big ones.
I think you're gonna see that pick up a little bit there, Jeff. Because houses are off the market.
Yeah.
You know, as, as confidence builds up a little bit more, I think we're gonna get a bump. We're gonna get a good bump. After that, you know, once unemployment figures in, I don't know, but uh we're experiencing a bump right now and, and maybe not just locally. I haven't felt it really locally, but overall, I mean, the new, the list of new listings keeps growing and growing every day. Uh, so.
The one question, the one question maybe you can answer, maybe somebody on the phone here. What, what, do we know, have any idea what is tied up or was tied up in Bucks County? Um, by the county in terms of real estate transfer taxes because of COVID and um uh folks not working at the courthouse? I mean, do we know if there's any, any monies in there? Are, that we'll see once they start uh processing again, if they're not already?
I have no
I mean, is there a way to find out? Would be my other question.
My wife looks at the record office and they are processing these.
They're submitting them by mail at this point, my understanding is primarily uh and instead of having in-person appointments. We could probably uncover some of the answers to that, Jeff. I don't know off the top of my head. I would say that my understanding is that unemployment uh benefits in Pennsylvania are actually tax exempt. I think Pennsylvania is one of the few states where that's the case. Have to verify that, but I, I, I believe that that is uh accurate in Pennsylvania.
Okay, so at the state level?
I think Pennsylvania waives, uh, I think there's a waiver of income tax for employment benefits. Pennsylvania is one of five or six states where that's the, that's the case. Uh, I believe, I believe. I have to verify that.
Okay. I have managed to derail my train of thought. We, anything else, Sean? Anything for the manager's report?
Uh, only thing I'll mention is that I was out at Chestnut Street Park today and it is close to uh completion. They are um just waiting on some benches and uh that are on back order that they expect any time now. And uh they finished the paving today. The porting place is going to be installed tomorrow. And uh it's really close to being able to open.
Excellent. The engineer's report is in your packet. Mike McGinnis solicitor's report?
My report is also in the packet.
Anything from you, Kathy Milligan, on the police report?
No, sir. The information is contained in the packet.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, anything to add, Sean?
No, the report's in the packet.
As is, as are the reports for the Chauvin EMS and Chauvin Fire Company, uh which takes us to action items and I'm going to take whatever liberty I can. Um, I probably should have said under special items that um Robert Cotton, a very, very long tenured board of supervisors member in New Britain Township, uh a member of the fire company. I found out a member of the EMS for a number of years passed away due to COVID-19 in May. And uh simply want to make mention of Bob. Uh, I think most recently, people may remember Bob is always having a camera around his neck, especially for the fire company. Um, but a uh, a man with a long, long history of public service that deserves to be recognized. He does have a bridge on the Parkway meeting or yes, on the Parkway named after him as well as um a park in New Britain Township in his honor.
John?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to mention that Bob attended many 202 Parkway meetings. He was the rep from uh New Britain Township. I was Chauvin's. And whenever we discussed the width of the lanes, which were 11 feet, uh Bob would always mention how the, we needed to be able to get emergency vehicles. You could almost you would just point to Bob and he talked to him about how we needed at least five feet for um emergency access of vehicles and we, even though it's marked as a bike lane, because we tried to get shoulders and the bike lane, um, I think we have Bob to thank for that. Even though it's very, it seems narrow to a lot of drivers, uh it would be narrower without Bob. So.
And thank you for indulging me on that a little bit out of order comment that I made, uh, but we should, we had to recognize Bob. Um, action item, the only action item we have is a bid for asbestos mitigation for the new Central Bucks Regional Police Department Building and Doylestown Borough Hall located at 229 Broad Street, the old Penn Dot Building in Doylestown. Uh, the successful, or the the, the committee has recommended acceptance by the three boroughs, Doylestown, Chauvin and New Britain. Uh, from Prism Response out of Drum, Pennsylvania, the amount of $45,929, of which are 13 point something percent, we'll use Maryland's 14%. Uh, is about $7,500 in round numbers would be the Chauvin Borough portion for the police headquarters portion of the total asbestos mitigation. Um, for the sake of simplicity and discussion, I will make a motion uh to award the bid for asbestos mitigation for the new Central Bucks Regional Police Department Building and Doylestown Borough Hall, et cetera, in the amount of $45,929 to Prism Response LLC out of Drum, PA. And call that number, oh great, my calculator died. Uh, call that number about $7,500. That's the right number.
I believe it's, it's closer to $6,500.
I'm sorry?
It's closer to $6,500.
Yeah.
And pull it up.
I, I, I've made the motion, if anybody cares to, second the motion to accept the bid for Prism Response.
I'll second. This is Marilyn.
At this point, any comments, questions, discussion on this motion?
No, this is door slamming. Sorry.
Okay. Anybody else? In that case, a vote is in order. It's an expenditure. So we'll do a roll call vote. Tracy Bowen?
Yeah.
Yes.
John Engel will vote yes. Mark Fliden? Mark? Unheeded. He's, there was the thumbs up if it's yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, the thumbs up, yes. Mitch Meyerson?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries unanimously. Uh, the joys of go-to meeting. Have any old business? New business? I am surprised no new business. Um. I'm not missing anyone. Okay.
So we, so why do we want to talk about what we're doing for next?
Yeah, well, that's again, um, that's another question. I, it's I did Christian guests or three days um in early July, but I don't have any solid information on that. Um, does anybody have any discussion of whether they want to try to meet in person under the yellow which we are under now? I will say that to be completely open about it, Governor Wolf has basically exempted political entities from the, the meeting rules or the, the rules of the red, yellow, green. But if we act as a business, um, we should help you in my house. I would prefer at this point, one of seven or eight or nine um to not meet in person in July. And another reason that I don't, at this point, if change is an opinion to not have controversial topics that would bring in a large amount of public, uh which has made these meetings frankly easy, easier, not easy, but easier. That's all I have. Mitch, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so I'll take the position of, we met early on, uh when this all started. Um, I would be fine with meeting in person, provided we all had a map and maybe work on spreading us out a little more and running out chairs in the um public area. Um, and I don't doubt it. It's just very few show up. Um, I'd be, and I'd be interested if we could see people be in the doing or not. Public, um, we, we should get back on track sooner than later. That's all I'd say.
Mitch, I, I hear what you're saying and I probably will go up until a couple of weeks ago. My concern, and I kind of have some of the, the health issues in my household that John is probably dealing with. And I'm afraid of the way everybody gather and people traveling to those, that we may be getting a super I think we did a good job of keeping the virus early on and people just nervous on the news, even lowly, and it's maybe any of the eight or 10, 10 or 11 of us want, but just in interacting now, like at the post office or the bank or the supermarket that there's, I'm afraid of a resurgence and I, by July, we may know whether it happened or not. And, and they're cautiously talking about a second wave and, and they don't know and there's still so much we don't know about this virus that I am just nervous that we may have tweaked some of the stats very recently, that we may be relying on older data saying, okay, we think we have it under control, but there's recently been very large public gatherings that have a lot of people in our area attending. So I'm, I'm nervous about that, to be honest.
Yes, Mark.
So I actually, I agree with Mitch as well. I would really like to get back to it, but um I share the concerns of, that Tracy had. Um, I think it's um, things are, things are changing on a, like every few days and I think it's really difficult to make a decision about something that's a month away. Um, I, you know, I'd be open to entertaining the idea as we get closer. But at this point, if given, uh, given what I, what we know, I would have to say I would prefer not to meet in person.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think uh, I think it really sends a bad picture of a bunch of people sitting around a room covered in um it's just a bad example to set out the people. It's scary too. Uh, so I don't, I don't think it's a good picture. Uh, exercising, I'd like to exercise on this as a caution. I mean, there's no reason to make that leap just uh for a bad picture. Um, I'd also like to add that I know I'm mayor, but I'd like to vote on this because this is my house too.
Uh, it's my opinion is if we're green, we go with mask optional. Um, and get back to normal ASAP. You're not gonna be able to talk with a mask on in front of a microphone. And we'll be optional.
Um, I'm in the situation where I would prefer not to meet in public. I, I think it's, it's too dangerous um at this time unless we know more. The county just had 11 people that went to a shore party over the Memorial Day weekend and now they've got 11 cases. Uh, I, I agree with Tracy and Mark that, that it's too soon to really tell. We might not know more before our July meeting, but right now I'm not willing to take the chance.
I, I, I think we may need Mike McGinnis to weigh in, but I'm going to, I believe that if we, the only way we could make a decision would be in a public vote, which could be tonight or in two weeks at his, at our second advertised meeting. Uh, am I right on that, Mike?
This is not a listed action item. Um, I think that if the council were to defer a decision, that there was not a formal decision that relies to meet on, on go-to meeting. I mean, we, we developed the policy with council's direction, obviously, but I am comfortable from a legal I am comfortable from a legal standpoint to uh get a consensus as this, as this unfolds and make a decision as it's closer uh without requiring an official vote as it's not an actual item. But if, if we're trying to develop the consensus of council uh and it's the preference of council to have a vote on it, then certainly we can, we can have a vote. But if the question is, do we need a special meeting? Just to vote on whether to meet in person or virtually, my answer to that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, Mitch?
So what we're doing on the um business alliances, we are meeting on Thursday in person. And how we're doing it is meeting at um um uh nostalgia and really spread out. And that's how we're able to do that. So if you don't think that the Borough Hall could be spread out enough, then that is an issue.
Well, it'll certainly make recording the meeting harder because the microphones are fixed, in fixed position around the table. But I guess this is a practical point. So how does somebody want to, anybody want to proceed on this?
Yeah, this is really council's discretion um at this, at this stage. So I don't know how else to frame it other than that. It's, it's up to council. As you indicated as president, we can, council can elect to meet in person, even in yellow if, if council would like to or council continue to host remote meetings. It's up to, up to council.
Well, I mean, I think maybe we shouldn't push it then. I mean, if you, if you're really concerned with family members, then we, then just push you down the road for a little bit.
Well, I guess, I guess the simple thing to do is uh a motion for the purpose of discussion. And I will make a motion that we defer um moving to discussion, and I will make a motion that we, a fur, um, moving to face-to-face meetings to stick with go-to meeting, uh, for our next, well, for our June, I'm sorry, July 13th meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion from council or the mayor? In that case, um, I guess the easiest thing to do is do a roll call vote, because I know there's people on both sides of this. So Tracy, yes or no? I'm sorry, a yes would be to defer, would just be, a yes vote will mean staying with go-to meeting?
Yes.
That, that was a yes from Tracy. Yeah, cotton.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No. I would vote yes, stay with go-to meeting. Mark Flynn?
Yes.
Marilyn Jacobson?
Yes.
Mike Kelly?
Yes.
And Mitch Meyerson?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we, we have voted that we will addition, or we have voted that we will stick with go-to meeting, the virtual meeting, uh, for our meeting in July on Monday the 13th, and revisit it. And if the information from the county is correct, in the first week of July, we should find out. It seems to know in the first week of July what it's going, I shouldn't say from the county, but from the governor, what he's going to do. So what's that? Any other old business to discuss? Any new business?
I have one point that I'm not sure if we want to communicate it or not as a council, um, and I know Sergeant Milligan's on the call. I thought it was a really nice touch that Chief Knott sent out that communication in light of what's going on, um, and kind of just brought the community up to speed, was, and has always been as a community police force. And I think there was some residual concern when we merged, are we going to get too big? Are we now not going to be like, like a hometown police force? And I, I saw the Facebook post, um, and I thought it was really reassuring, and it kind of is the validation that we all, that we're not going to lose anything with this merger in terms of the high touch presence. And I don't know if as a council, we would want to just send a message back to Chief Knott saying, we saw it, we acknowledge it, and we appreciate the way the police are managing this whole situation.
I actually voiced that opinion to the chief, uh, as a individual.
Okay.
Because I am just so impressed with everything that the central department has been doing, and, uh, I did have a very brief, sort of off the record, early conversation with Captain Milligan, and, um, they have seen, they have seen demonstrations, but no real problems in Doylestown, which is where the demonstrations have been happening, in any area of the city. So I, I can't imagine anybody would, uh, I took the chief's word, and also all of that Shawton Borough does recognize the good that they're doing, and the direction that this police department is headed is, is only getting better and better. So thank you, sir.
Thank you for the kind words.
Demoted you.
I second that.
I'm sorry, did I demote him?
No, I did.
I second John.
Okay. Well, I, I'm so prone to mis-speaking, I just assumed I goofed on something.
Oh, me.
Okay. Funds and information are, of course, in the packet, the state auditor found absolutely no problems with our handling of liquid fuel funds, which is as much of a positive issue we'll ever get out of the auditor. You don't get compliments, you just get some, I mean, I, I've been through this when I was involved with the EMS. The best you can get from the auditor is approval of what you've been doing, especially in the report, it's quite official. And, um, we did receive a letter from Hank Couch, our junior borough counselor, who, um, is going to college next year, and unsure of, of his ability to participate in our meetings, because the schedule is totally unknown to him at this point. Uh, so.
His ability to participate in our meetings, because the schedule is totally unknown to him at this point.
So it looks like we may have an opening, or probably have an opening, need to explore an opening for a junior borough counselor. So if anybody knows of anyone who may want to, I know Hank would like to stay, he wrote a very nice letter that's included in the packet, uh, and I know from his heart in, in conversation with him, uh, that it's been a very positive experience. So, uh, we will let the public know through our Facebook and whatnot, that there is an opening for a junior borough counselor, and if anybody knows of anyone who might be interested, uh, I mean, it's a benefit for us and it's a benefit for them, so let's try to forward that win-win situation and continue our position of having a junior borough council.
Don, are we looking for someone who's a junior or a senior in high school? Is that ideally the age we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and embarrassing to say, I don't know the exact qualifications, uh, the technical qualifications, so, Don, I'm going to ask you to help us out with that in the next week or so, and just let people know exactly what are qualifications required for the junior borough counselor. My memory serves that you are correct, Tracy, but trusting my memory is a very dangerous path to walk down.
It may, if we don't get someone by August, it may make sense. I can maybe reach out to CB South, which is where a Shawton Borough kid would go if they were in the public school, there's obviously some private schools, but at the very least, if, if we put it with the guidance office, they may put something up for someone who's looking for, um, whether it's the service hours, uh, if they need it for one of the qualifications they're involved with.
Did you say, is it any west or south?
CB South would be Shawton Borough. Central Bucks South?
Well, we went to, um, CB West on this side. Shawton Borough was divided.
Okay.
152.
Okay, I have contacts at CB South, I know CB.
I have, I have contacts at CB West that I can contact, Lori Bagby up the street, uh, Joe's wife, is a guidance counselor over West.
Sean, will you, um, look at what the requirements, what is required to be a junior borough counselor for Shawton, and let people know so we make sure that only good information is out there?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we had no public comment in the beginning, do we have any?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I have a comment from Alex Sharkey, 30 South Line, Kilmke, Pike. His comment was, "The borough has been wrongly assessing decks as an impervious surface when calculating stormwater management. 2011 ordinance number 398 was adopted. The borough engineer clearly stated that decks were pervious. Due to zoning making me apply for management for my previous deck, I am out thousands of dollars and months of delays on my project. This issue needs to be addressed by council." Alex Sharkey. I will say that, um, Mike McGinnis, uh, and Pat DeGangi and myself have been dealing with this resident, um, and that we have been working with him to try to work him through the process, maybe Mike can speak to it a little bit if necessary, but I don't, we are working on this issue.
Yeah, and I don't want to pat or rich without them present, I think perhaps at the next meeting, um, if Mr. Sharkey still has concerns, I think it's probably not prudent just to pass position. What I will say is, uh, we did review, the, the language of the ordinance, uh, does not preclude stormwater management review for decks based upon a distinction of they're impervious. However, uh, Mr. Sharkey is correct that when the ordinance was, uh, up for consideration in 2011, that a comment, uh, according to the meeting minutes, that I reviewed, was made by Mr. DeGangi, that the decks were to be considered pervious. Um, and in speaking to Pat, I did relay that, um, the borough would be reimbursing his $255 fee incurred by CKS, that Pat had volunteered to, uh, cover that expense, uh, to address Mr. Sharkey's concerns. Regarding other expenses or delays, I, I won't comment to that, uh, but I will say that we have been in communication with him, uh, I know he has an application that's pending. Uh, we have, we had a lengthy correspondence with Mr. Sharkey. So this is a situation that's ongoing. Um, he commented tonight, and certainly would think that if he has specific concerns related to how either Keystone or CKS handled any matters with respect to his application, I think it would be fair to Rich or Pat to be present, to be able to comment on that directly.
To be able to comment on that directly.
I will say that we've, we have put in considerable, I'm just to, to, obviously, it's written in, he should participate and communicate with Sean and with council, and I will say that we have not been ignoring those questions, we need to address them, um, and are continuing to address them with, with Mr. Sharkey. And I think that, um, Pat's gesture of the reimbursement of the $255 fee indicates that the borough is continuing to work with him in this regard.
Which, is this the one way up on the hill? Or is this the one that's finished?
I, I'm not sure, I honestly don't know.
Sean?
Sean, um, it's 30 South Line, Kilm, is this the one that's under construction, or is this the one that's finished up on the hill? It's the one that's on the hill, I, I believe you're referring to.
Uh, it just has its foundation in, that one?
No, this is, the house is built.
Okay, yeah, this is the one that's finished then, yes, okay. All right. Um, I would think if we were in person with Mr. Sharkey, uh, my suggestion would be to ask Sean to work with Pat, Mike, and Rich O'Brien if necessary, I'm not, I'm not sure that, but to work with professional staff to come up with a, uh, advice to council on whether Mr. Sharkey's position is correct or incorrect. I have, personally, I have no idea. Um, so, uh, we already hear the staff is working on it, and I think we need to continue to do this, and, uh, I don't know what else we can do. I, anybody have any other thoughts or suggestions?
If I can chime in very briefly again, Mr. Rangle, in case Mr. Sharkey is, is watching, um, and I'm presuming he probably is, in light of submitting the comment, I would say that how council conducts business ordinarily is, is obviously residents bring concerns to council, and if council can address them the first time they hear the concerns, then certainly they do so at the meeting. However, since council has not before tonight, uh, been involved, to my knowledge, with respect to that property, they have not reviewed any of the concerns, any of the applications that were previously submitted, uh, council is not in a, in my opinion, in a position to take a position at this point, and I hope that Mr. Sharkey understands that this, he's been communicating with borough professionals, the matter has been raised to Borough Council, um, the council president has directed, uh, the borough manager and the borough professionals to work with you, and I would presume at the next council meeting, um, especially perhaps if, if, uh, Mr. DeGangi or Mr. O'Brien are also present, that we will be able to provide a report at that time, and council will have more information to be able to assess any of the concerns that you have with respect to your property.
I wish I had said that.
I, I did encourage Mr. Sharkey to prepare a written statement, because we're holding these meetings virtually. This is just a text message I just received during the meeting, so I, I did ask him to put something together that I could forward on to council for, you know, if he wanted an actual, you know, more in-depth discussion to happen during the meeting.
But in, inaction tonight is not indicative of council not being concerned, it's simply to afford council the opportunity to take in more information.
Right, my direction to, to Sean and professionals is to, uh, research this and provide us with a factual opinion, uh, based on our ordinance and, and whatever other laws may be involved. Uh, I don't know if it's a building code, um, we have to rely on the professionals to do that and give us advice on that, and then we take action with that advice in mind. So, uh, the, the comment is certainly noted, the investigation will go on, in addition to dealing with Mr. Sharkey, as staff and the manager have done so, um, I would expect that we will be getting a report on their position based on the ordinance and any other attenuating facts. Uh, so if necessary, we are better armed with knowledge rather than opinion.